Before.
Oh, I think Dave's in here as well. I just thank you for having me.
Okay, uh, I'll recall the meeting of the East Windsor zoning Board of Appeals of Monday, April fourth, twenty twenty two to order. It's like I read on seven oh one. Yeah, um, this is a hybrid meeting, so uh, the rules are gonna be pretty much the same. The way we're gonna conduct the hearings, we're gonna allow the applicant to present their case, then followed by any board member questions. Uh, and then we'll open it up to anybody in the public that wishes to speak during the public hearing at that time. We'll allow the applicant, uh, if there are any questions or or comments from the audience to rebut or to answer those questions, and then they'll close the hearing and take a vote. And the this, I wanna call the role just to so some of those here. I think we have one commissioner on, uh, or two, uh, two commissioners on, on, on Zoom, right? Good.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm here.
Okay.
Great. All right. I'm sorry.
Hi, Jose.
Hybrid. I'm used to all Zoom or all the first. This is like the first hybrid meeting.
Yeah, I had not realized that we were doing this hybrid. Otherwise, I would've came down there. I thought this was just a strictly Zoom meeting.
Yeah.
All right. Oh, either way, well, we'll see how this works.
Okay, so Jose.
Here.
Steve. So Dan.
Yeah.
Nolan.
Yep.
Yep. Kurt.
Here.
Yep, Scott.
Here.
David.
Here. Now, is that leave? That that gives a six, right? With me. Uh, who's, who's the all?
I'm an opponent.
So you're an office, so you're, so we got. You know, you know, we turn this.
Uh.
We haven't met in a long time.
Kurt has been.
He has been.
Been.
Attending.
Yeah.
So, so it would be either. Oh. Uh, I guess we'll go with Scott, uh, just to make a note of it. So next time, David, and then he'll be sitting in for Dan, who's not here. All right, so we do have five. Let's see. So we do have a form. Uh, we don't have a flag here. Can we have a flag? We'll, we'll just skip that for today. We'll just jump to the hearings. Will Secretary read the legal notice, please? Steve? Oh, so who wants to, who wants to say? Steve and Dan are both here, so we could have David and Scott. Well, do you wanna read the legal notice? Steph? Just for the record. So we do have, uh, David Swaim and Scott Morgan sitting here for hand the moment. Steve's not.
All right.
Sorry, I didn't realize Steve was here.
Read the notice. The East Windsor zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, April fourth, at seven PM. To consider the application details below, the meeting will be held in East Windsor Town Hall, eleven Ry Street, Broad Brook, Connecticut, and online. Details regarding how to attend will be published on the commission's agenda and will be made available on the town's website. Z B A dash twenty twenty-two dash oh one applicant owner Arvin Persad has an application before the East Windsor zoning Board of Appeals to request for a relief on the East Windsor zoning regulations, section six hundred point two, landscape buffer requirements for property located at two ninety-eight South Main Street, East Windsor, Connecticut, and more specifically described as block lot zero zero two dash zero five dash zero nine nine V two zone. For property, the application is made available in the planning department office at East Windsor Town Hall, and will be posted online for the commission's agenda at eastwindsorct.gov. At this meeting, interested persons may be heard and written communication received. Information on how to attend this meeting will be published on the commission's website and the meeting agenda a minimum of twenty-four hours before the meeting. This was posted in the Journal Inquirer on March twenty-fourth and March twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you. Uh, now, you don't have the ability to put things up share screens, right? That's, that's the only thing about having a hybrid not as zoom is that the applicant can't. Or anyone that may be tuning in, they can't see what we're looking at. Correct?
Is there anyone who doesn't, didn't get a packet?
Everybody has a packet, and I don't think there's anyone. Is there anyone in the audience that's, that? No, okay, then we can just proceed. Is the app, uh, so you're representing the applicant?
I'm David Blackwell. I'm here for the applicant who I think is on there and see.
He is.
Yes.
He's inside.
I'm here.
He's there. So, and I see that our engineer, Robert Arsenal, is also there.
Yes.
What I'd like to do is kind of go over.
We can share. He can share his screen.
Oh, good.
Oh, yeah.
I can make.
The red shirt.
I will.
The guy with the red shirt.
That's great. Making you a co-host. In the event you want to, uh, share your screen.
Oh, okay. So who's gonna do the presentation? Do you want?
I, I guess I'm doing the presentation. Our, our orbit is on the screen, but I'd like to do is start the presentation, talking about what we're trying to demonstrate here. And when it comes to the, the strict letter of the zoning ordinance, I'd like to have Mr. Mr. Arsenal answer some questions for the record. So I think we have to show that the two parts of the variance is not going to substantially affect the comprehensive zoning plan and adherence to the strict letter of the zoning ordinance must be shown because of region. Uh, I've gone over the comprehensive zoning plan, both the regulations, zoning regulations themselves, as well as the plan of conservation development. I have copies of the relevant portions here. And there's no specific language, either recognizing the need for this requested relief nor discouraging it in either one of them. I want to point out that in page thirty-one of the zoning regulations, this is not a non-conforming lot. I understand that. But there's a footnote for non-conforming lots with less than the required frontage, allowing for side yard requirements of ten percent of the frontage or ten feet, whichever is greater. If that were applied here, ten percent of this hundred and fifty-two lot foot wide lot would be fifteen feet, which is essentially what we're asking for. So there's some reference to something similar to this, although I understand this is not a non-conforming lot. There's also a note about outdoor storage being buffered from residential zones with a twenty-foot wide landscape buffer, and that again, not entirely applicable here, but again, to the point that there's not a lot of language in the regulation. And then, of course, there's a buffer requirement issue, that issue. In the plan of conservation development, I took the relevant, relevant portions, pages forty-seven to fifty-nine, and again, there's no specific language either recognizing the need for the requested relief nor discouraging this request. Um, there is a reference to group five stating that regulations have made it difficult for businesses to establish themselves in this quarter, which has become a mix of auto uses and residential properties. Admittedly, that is probably for an area just north of this parcel, but I think the same principle applies here. So I think the requested relief does not substantially affect the comprehensive zoning plan, even zoning regulations favorably or unfavorably or the plan of conservation development. Uh, the second part of it is adherence to the strict letter of the zoning ordinance must be shown to cause unusual hardship. But this is where I'd like to ask Robert Arsenal to join us talking about this. Bob, did you identify yourself for the?
Yes, Robert Arsenal, professional engineer, uh, for the project.
Thank you. And you're familiar with this site at two ninety-eight South Main Street?
Yes.
And you're familiar with the appropriate zoning regulations from this site?
Yes.
How many parking spaces are required here by zoning?
Uh, fourteen.
And how many have you provided for?
Fifteen.
Three. What was that? Fifty, fifteen, yes. And what's the buffer requirement for this site?
Um, the buffer requirement in section six hundred point two calls for a hundred feet with a possible reduction to fifty feet. Um, but both of those would, uh, would hurt the property.
And you prepared a, a proposed buffer plan. I think everybody has it in their possession. Is that correct?
Yes.
What would happen if a one hundred foot buffer is required?
If it's, if it's the one hundred foot buffer, it basically would, would completely, uh, take up the most of the, almost eighty percent of the property. So they'd be completely un, unbuildable.
Okay. And what would happen if a fifty foot buffer is required?
It would pretty much basically wipe out all of the parking, um, other than, other than maybe three or four spaces. And it would also affect the entrance drive coming into the property. So basically, that would also render the site unusable as far as, uh, uh, the purpose intended.
Is there any way to reconfigure this site to meet these requirements?
No, there isn't. No. I looked at different, different scenarios. This is the only one that works.
And would you say that special conditions and circumstances exist that are particular to this land or the structure that's proposed on it that are not applicable to other lands and other structures in the area?
Um, well, I'm not sure. I don't know about other, other lands or other properties in the area, but for this specific site, uh, even the fifty, even the fifty foot buffer would, would not work. It would render it unusable.
Would you say that these special circumstances relate to this, the condition of this land or parcel, perhaps the size of the parcel and then, as you say, the small size of the parcel?
Yes, yeah, it's a very small parcel.
And that the special conditions and circumstances of this parcel, are they in any way related to the applicant himself?
I'm not sure what you mean by that.
Did the applicant create the circumstances?
No, no, no. The, the, the parcel, as he purchased it, was point five three acres, and that's, that's what it is. So.
Did a predecessor create these circumstances?
No, no.
It's vacant land, is it not?
Yes, it's vacant land.
Yeah. Do these special circumstances create an exceptional difficulty for, for the, for the client or an unusual hardship that are not of his making?
Yes, yes.
And, and we just were talking about this. Would a literal app, interpretation, excuse me, would a literal interpretation of these provisions of the regulations deprive the applicant of rights that are commonly enjoyed by other properties in the same area, same district?
Yes.
Yeah. Would granting this variance that's been requested and before the, uh, Z B A, would it confer upon the applicant any special privilege or use that is denied to other lands or structures or buildings in the same district?
No, no.
And I guess the question, the final two questions are, if the variance is granted, what's the minimum variance that will make it possible for reasonable use of the land and a structure that is proposed on it?
It, it would be on the map that I, that I provided, the fifteen feet.
Fifteen feet, thank you.
Yes, with, with a fence. We're providing it with a fence.
Would you say that granting the areas would be in harmony with the general purpose and intent of these regulations? And it would not injure the neighborhood or otherwise be detrimental to the public welfare?
Yes, I would agree.
Okay, thank you. I want to say that the property is a hundred and fifty-two point oh four feet wide at its widest point. Strict adherence to the landscape requirement takes up, I said two-thirds, he says eighty percent of the entire property. It runs directly through the proposed building. If the same requirement existed from the south boundary line, the buffers would quite literally overlap. You have some sort of concentric circles or something. However, the south boundary line is a South Windsor residence, and the South Windsor Town Planner is only requesting a row of arbor by. We talked about the parking spaces, and we talked about the fact that the, the engineer has testified, there's just no way to reconfigure this site that would not contradict the requirements of parking and buffer. And there's no reconfiguration of the site, which will allow the site to be used for a certain intended purpose. And the property from which the buffer requirement emanates is a trailer park. And while the units themselves are residential, the park is in fact in the B two zone, and the park is a business. Therefore, to characterize the use of the property to the north as solely residential would not be accurate. Finally, we know that Mr. Persaud was approved for a certificate of location by this Z B A back in July twenty sixteen for this person. And he did so in order to obtain a Connecticut automotive dealers' or repairers license from the Department of Motor Vehicles. That C M, the, the Connecticut D M V process and form requires, necessitates a site drawing be prepared in accordance with the license application drawing specifications. It's on a form K nine, which I have before us here. Let's shoot it, K ninety-three. And the K ninety-three site plan is dramatically different from an A two survey. It is conceptual in nature. However, that K ninety-three site plan did not and was not intended to meet the regulations of the town of East Windsor. Instead, it was meant to demonstrate to the Connecticut D M V that this site is suitable for the use intended and to induce Mr. Persaud to purchase the land for that use. Therefore, I submit, for all these reasons, the applicant meets the second program of the test, which is adherence to the strict letter of the zoning ordinance must be shown to cause unusual hardship carrying out the general purposes of the plan. Uh, I like to sort of conclude by saying that strict compliance of the buffer requirements of the East Windsor zoning regulations or even a partial compliance with a fifty percent reduction of the buffer requirement creates such a hardship that the property is rendered unusable by the owner. The site is too small for reconfiguration to successfully locate the improvements on the property. This is not a request for variance about aesthetics. It's not discontent by the owner with the present use of the property. Rather, this is vacant land for which the owner seeks to turn into a permitted use, but for the buffer regulation. I would say that unfortunately, I, I, I would characterize the proposed buffer plan, if forced to be employed, is confiscatory in nature, in that it actually confiscates two-thirds of the land. Again, uh, Mr. Arsenal says eighty percent. It defeats his owner's intended use and perhaps any use consistent with these own requirements.
Question? Yeah, a, a couple of them. I just, uh, uh, no, you mentioned that, are you, you're not asking for setback variance, are you?
No.
And so you said is, is the fifteen is, is what the zone required?
But yeah, the buffer requirement is a humble.
Well, is that the buffer? It's a setback that I'm, you mentioned that, that there's a provision for small lots that's ten percent.
Yes.
Oh, oh, yeah.
But, but you're not asking for variance from that.
No.
Because, because that doesn't apply.
No, it doesn't apply, but I was saying that when I searched the regulations, the, the closest thing I could find was, or setback requirements and one for, um, outbuildings of some sort.
So, so what you're saying, just to be, just to clarify is, is that when, when you came into the location back in twenty sixteen, plan that was presented did not, did not meet the buffer requirements.
I, I could share with you the site plan?
Yeah, sure.
That was a, so it wasn't a site plan.
No, it wasn't.
Location. Location.
And again, it's a location. So.
It.
It was approved as.
As a concept.
As a concept.
Then, then for the certificate of location for D M V purposes of the D M V, this wasn't local. C B A access. Agency of D M V. And, and this gets a little bit confusing. D M V. D M V.
Memo. And, um, there's a hundred fifty required landscape buffer.
It's a hundred foot. Did I say one fifty?
Yeah, you said a hundred thirty-five foot variance from the one hundred fifty required.
That's fast. I think that's my part. That's an error.
Okay, that's just confused.
Yeah.
So, so that, that hundred buck, buck, what buffers is from the, from the, now, what's, what, how does that act? I'm not trying to find it through here. Well, what's the actual, uh, regulations say?
So.
Uh, regarding the buffers, it's from residential.
Yeah.
Use or residential zone?
Use, it says.
All right.
Okay. Do you want me to read?
Sure. Just reading for the record, just to clear.
Okay, so. In six hundred point one, overall landscape area requirements, any lot developed in a business industrial, adult residential housing development or multifamily development district zone shall provide landscape areas on the portion of the site that are not covered by impervious surface. Perimeter landscaping areas shall contain at least one shade tree, three inches in caliper for each fifty feet or part thereof, six hundred point two landscape buffer requirements unless specified elsewhere in the regulations associated with a special use permit, landscape buffers of a hundred feet between commercial, industrial uses and residential uses and fifty feet between multifamily and single-family residential uses shall be required, except when a buffer includes a visual screen of dense planting or solid fencing. At the discretion of the commission, the buffer requirements shall be reduced by fifty percent. The dense planting shall consist of evergreen trees no less than six feet in height, planted twenty feet center to center in two staggered rows. Solid fencing shall be at least six feet high in height and constructed of low maintenance materials such as vinyl, cedar, or vinyl, vinyl coated chain link privacy slats.
Okay, thank you. So, so it is a usage. Just some summary. So it's. So in, in South Windsor, they, they were notified, and the only response was that they wanted to show plans, correct?
Yes.
If I read the memo correctly.
That's.
Uh, and I'm assuming uh, that we sent, that letters were sent to the budding property owners to the north.
Yes.
Do we receive any comments from the budding property owners?
So I'm here to represent the party that is at the, uh, the south. Sorry, to get to the south in South Windsor, as well as to the west in South Windsor.
Okay, so that's why you're, okay, we'll get to that. I'm, I'm talking to the mobile home park.
Mobile home park. I got a call asking me, uh, what the notification was for, because they didn't really have an issue. They just wanted to know what the issue was.
All right, um, go around with the other commissioners. Let's, for now, anyway, start with Scott.
Um, I can't figure out anything right now.
David?
Yeah, I'm in the same place. It looks like, uh,
Okay, we got Nolan. Any questions of the applicant?
Uh, sure. So I'm wondering, so you're saying that South Windsor has only asked for a tree line, not a fence line? Like, it appears the proposal is stating for the side, um, that includes the mobile home. Is that accurate? That we're only tree line on the South Windsor line?
That's correct.
Their planner, as we have the neighbor actually here, so.
Yeah.
They'll have his testimony in a, in a second.
Okay, that's perfect. Okay, and my only, my other question about the fencing, um, it looks like there's going to be a tree line and fencing. Is the fencing on the, like, which side of the tree line will the fencing be on? Will it be on the side of budding the mobile homes or the side facing the property that?
The, the tree line that you see on the plan to the north is actually the existing tree line.
Okay.
What we're doing is we're, we're not touching that. We're putting the fence south of that existing tree line. So we're gonna have the fence and the tree line before the property to the north.
Okay, thank you.
Is that it, Mo? Okay, we'll have, uh, well, we'll go with Mr. and then Kurt. I'm going by what? Any? Any questions?
No questions.
Okay, Commissioner Kurt.
You're muted.
Muted, Kurt. You gotta mute yourself. Can't hear you. Get them mute yourself. Just hang in a second. We can't hear you. Press your spacebar.
There we go. Sorry about that.
Okay.
Mr. Arsenal, uh, you had mentioned that you would put up a, uh, a, uh, topographic map.
Yes, I can do that now.
Yeah. My concern is that, uh, automobile, uh, uh, water could, uh, flow south into the Scenic, uh, River Basin and then go into the Connecticut River and would imperil, um, drinking water in the Connecticut River downstream and put the town and the property owner uh, at risk if they ever tested the water and the water had a bunch of, uh, uh, oil and, and, uh, toxic chemicals in it. That's my concern.
Can you, can you see the screen that I'm sharing now?
Yes, yes.
Yeah. Yeah, this is the topographic site plan, and basically what we're proposing is a, a catch basin um, at this location with underground, underground storage for the storm drainage and then discharge, uh, to the west with a plunge pool and a, and a level spreader. So we've, we've accounted for uh, both quantity and quality of water that's going to be coming out of the site. Um, so, and we have a sediment station, sedimentation style structure for the catch basin. So we'll be catching sediment and oils prior to any kind of a discharge. Plus, like I said, this here will be an underground storage, uh, with, with perforated galleys and stone prior to discharge to another plunge pool, which, which basically slows down velocities and traps sediments as well. And then a, a level spreader, which allows the water to just flow very gently, uh, off the site to the west.
Yeah, and I don't want to diminish the, the, the concern, but, you know, there is a pending application before the Human Wellness Commission and also the planning and zoning, which will have the benefit of the town engineers, uh, review of this. Our, our role right here is the zoning board of appeals is, is not necessarily to get into the uh, details, uh, the weeds of the application, only to determine if there's a, a physical hardship with the location of the, of, of the buildings and the, and the parking. So, um, it's, 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 it's a proper concern. I just, I'm just questioning whether this, you know, we, we really have any jurisdiction to.
Okay, so I shouldn't, this wasn't the proper place to bring it up.
Yeah, it's, 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 there's a, well, like I said, I think there's a, there's a Wellness Commission, and there's a Planning and Zoning Commission, and they typically go through drainage in great detail, uh, and have the town engineer, uh, review it and, and, and comment on it. So uh, we don't have that, uh, because it's not part of what we have to consider.
Okay. Um, the, I learn a little bit every time.
Any other questions?
No questions.
Okay. Can you say the answer is on this side?
Yeah, I think it's the.
I think it's lines.
Yeah, I think this, these little bollards here. I think this is, that looks like it.
I actually have a question. It shows eleven on the plan, eleven cars.
I actually have a question. It shows eleven on the plan, eleven car spaces, not in that much of eight.
One that's four. Displaying sport display.
Oh, display area. Okay. So there's.
I think he gets a total of fourteen.
Fourteen, okay.
I'm sorry, fifteen.
Fifteen, yeah.
Actually. Not including fifteen, not including the display area. We have eleven here. Then we have a handicap spot. Right here. And then what we're doing is we're showing three parking spaces in front of the bays themselves, plus the display area.
Okay, so you oh, one, two, three. Yeah, it's not shown on the plans we got.
I didn't show it, but.
Yeah, the 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 space I I see that handicap space, but I don't see the ones in front of it. You're not counting current display.
Yeah, there's a double cap. They're not counting the display. There's a it's actually last name.
Okay, any other board members have questions? I'm looking it up to for public comment. Please identify yourself for the record.
My name is William Kellyer. I reside at twenty forty five John Fitch Boulevard in South Windsor. And I'm here to represent myself as the landowner, which is on the west side, which is on the actual Connecticut River Basin area. As well as my next door neighbor, which is Corey Bailey. And his address is two zero eight five John Fitch Boulevard.
So so you're you have the property. Directly west of this.
Correct.
And where these are still. So your your property also extended to South Windsor?
Yes, I I have sixteen. I have sixty seven acres in southern, I have fifteen, I'm sorry, sixty seven acres in East Windsor and about twenty five in Southern.
So.
You said two forty five.
Yeah, I live at two forty five.
And you neighbors two zero eight.
Right, my parents live at two oh six, but he was unable to. All right. So my first question was asking about the spacing, but this is on the car parking areas fifteen versus the eleven. That seemed to be the answer already. One question I do have is what is the percentage of the impervious pavement? Impervious areas of the site that's allowable for your.
Bob, did you hear the question?
Yes.
But I think that can answer that.
I think it's fifty five percent.
We have the regulations.
That's sixty five percent required. We have forty eight percent. So we're under, I mean, not required, but maximum.
That's covered, okay. All right, I'm a little disheartened with our our town planner. Is it, no, no. For for South for South, South, South. South.
Michelle, Michelle White.
Michelle White, okay, I've I've had many, many dealings with her. It's one of my projects actually in South Windsor, which was a star center, unfortunately with this. Past COVID and and economic. She's not feasible to do a cheerleading facility over on my my parcel. But anyway, so I'm just a little disheartened that she was able to step up and just say that all she's looking for. Is a row of arborvitaries for my neighbors, Corey Bailey and his wife Amy. Knowing that the other side on the actual north is looking to receive some sort of a. Says what six foot or eight foot, I can't read that. It calls for a solid vinyl fence. One thing that I had that he does have a problem with is that is his main driveway to his house. So he's always going to be exposed to this. Building or whatever type of development is going to happen in this in this parcel. So he's very concerned. I mean, you guys, those kids out there, they have a basketball. Home I already have picked picnics and all that stuff. So that's that's one of his big, big issues that his driveway actually borders this.
So it's right on the you're saying it's his driveway is right on the line?
Correct.
The driveway entrance is shown on that map. You can see the driveway comes in off of Route five on on my map.
Yes, I think I see it, yeah. Here. Right up here.
His his, the driveway actually follows the East Windsor, South Windsor town line or the proper line joining the two portions. I I as well being on the west, I would also enjoy having some sort of a privacy fencing as well. What else directly behind? I have farmland in the back, but I really don't want anybody to be on the site and decide that they want to go hunting, fishing or what have you. It's it's definitely private area. And that's what we're having. We're actually having, well, not recently, but in the past, we've had issues with the trailer park. Because my property continues to the north behind the trailer park as well. We have a lot of people that are, you know, they see this. And the grass is always green around the other side of the fence. And we've had recycle, we've got all kinds of stuff within the last five, six years.
Is there water down there?
Yes, yeah, yeah. I mean, it's a flood zone. So the water does, the five hundred year flood actually comes to, if you have that grading plan that the engineer was provided earlier. The five hundred year flood does come to the bottom of that hill. So it's it's very detrimental. I know we had raised a question about the the impact to the Connecticut River Basin. One thing I think as this plan does go through that, rather than just having. Some sort of a sedimentation control. That's why it seems like he's providing. I would I would actually would definitely recommend them having some. A commercial type oil water separator. Prior to discharging.
Again, that's something to bring up, you both finding it so correct, not really are. Jurisdiction.
Now, one. One thing that this is still at the infancy stage is this garage that we're looking at is what's going to be a metal type building.
I'm gonna let Bobby and say that, Bobby, you know, the material from which the building will be constructed?
Yeah, I think Arvin can probably address that too, but it is a metal building. Yes.
Yeah, it's considered gall volume.
Quite. So just going to be a regular open space type structure with with the. Aluminum or steel panels.
Yes, it'll be aluminum.
And then once again, since you are, you are kind of taking over residential area. By the lot size and what it really I think it's intended to. I think we need to have something a little bit more. More appealing, if you want to say, to the local residents, being my neighbor and myself. So I I have that issue. The other thing too, that I have a very, very proud, big problem with is. During the summer months, we have Dairy Delight Ice Cream Parlor. That's right across the street. And a lot of people like to actually make the U turn at the end of the divided highway marking. Area. This, I believe, is going to be a very, very serious impact. Going in and out. At that location. Luckily, top of it is all a few accidents over the last two, if I live since my lifetime. But it's getting worse. Especially with the traffic. You guys have just got a new development up on Scenic Road. By the the salvage area, salvage yard. And that seems to be adding more traffic into that area. A lot of people want to take the go north and make make that U turn. My last, my last point I want to do is just a question to throw out because since having experience of myself, myself of trying to develop some parcel of my land. The state had a very large intervention. Knowing that my property. Is within a five hundred foot. Of a town line. I forgot exactly what exactly I had to go through, but it was definitely difficult. I got over that hurdle. I think it finally passed, but today was already zoning in South Windsor. Put the building there. I know that's one thing that the state say had to do a review and I had to give you the name. It's one thing to that that's just be made aware of, especially with the the size of this lot. It's unfortunate. That's very small. It's unfortunate. I was gonna say.
Was I? Any course, anyone else here to? Give any testimony? Have anybody? No. Hearing none. Turn it back to the applicant to answer any questions or observations. I I can't, I can't speak for Mr. Person with respect to the fencing issue that you were saying, but. I'm reminded in Robert Frost poem, good fences make good neighbors. And I think that's something to be said for the fact that just as you know, one. People coming out of your property, I'm sure the same is true the other way. So I I'm sure he'll take that under advisement. He's hearing it right now and I'm sure he'll listen.
Yeah, we won't have a problem with the fencing. That will be fine.
I want to comment about the residential area. I understand. You're living in residential area in South Windsor and. The mobile homes to the north are residences, but as I said, it's technically a B two zone. It's a business zone. So. For us to say it's a residential area, either this proposed site or even the site. Just north of it is not exactly accurate for. Trailer Park is a park. It is a business and it's currently located there. Although residences do live there, so it's a little bit of a hybrid, I suppose, but it is a B two zone. I think you're talking with respect to the traffic. Was the State Traffic Commission? Was that what you're thinking here?
Um, no, it was, it was. I apologize. I I came pretty much ill prepared to this meeting, but I just anyway, wanted to see what was going on, but I didn't know you guys were going to vote actually today. So that's why I kind of scratched chicken scratch.
Let me just, I'm sorry to interrupt, but really that that the the traffic issues or all that before planning and zoning, it's a state road. If the Office of Street Traffic Administration may be thinking of those stuff.
Yes.
Okay, so that, you know, they they would look at this and they would, because I assume there's no curb cut there right now. There is? No, there isn't. So, you know, any curb cuts required that that will any new curb cuts to that that go on to the. Property will require state review and approval before. And with conditions, then they may they may limit turns in and out of there. I've seen them limit, you know, things to right turns in and right turns out only if it's a really issue, but that that will be reviewed at that level. Now, again, we're here as a. Okay, and and. Anything else from anyone?
Just to note that the vegetation on the edges here is. Your mind can turn this into something which is not. It's very sparse.
Okay, but there's a fence.
Plan.
Plan and and just, yeah, how about the? I guess my question, and again, the they're they're not asking for any kind of. Variances from from the west, which is your, you know, you said orders your farm land. The vegetation there is looks like there's, you know, there's a thirty foot your yard. And I don't have my scale. It's about a twenty five foot tree line with trees and brush out there. Also. It's already planned. And and I don't know whether it's our. The gas or required fencing. Long the western side when no no variances are being requested. I mean, you may want to bring that up to planning zoning. They don't have a hearing whether, you know, they're protecting, but there's no variances being requested from your property. So because it's I I'm assuming yours is also zone B two.
No.
After the, what's the zone?
It's owned as agricultural.
Okay, but still there's no residences. Yeah, is there?
No. But one one thing I'd like to add to above the trees, like you had said, one thing that we noticed that. That area of that property has been recently forested, so that the trees have been severely set down.
They've been cutting trees. But again, and that issue, I think, planning zone. Because then I asked for. The other side, I can see requiring additional. Because they are getting asking for relief. From from the buffer requirements. So. Is that it? Any other questions from anybody? Comments?
No less. Well, this is probably, I keep on bringing up stuff with planning zoning. Yeah, is is like the light, the the one thing that I'm very upset with too, or of course upset with is with the parking being faced. In that general direction from north to south that the lighting. Will impact his property.
From from what? From the headlights?
Well, from the headlights or from just a regular parking lot stalls or any of that, especially during the winter months when you have lighting that has been done to this site. There's more of things.
Yeah, again, again, it's it's a zone. Regardless of, you know, it's a B two zone, so but. Regardless of the, I mean, I I'm not sure we can fit any kind of business in there. You have to, you have grants some reasonable use to the property. This is something for us to. Reasonable use of the property and the minimal variances that would be needed to make the. Probably usable for the intended purposes of the sound. So. The the lighting, I assume we have good decent lighting regulations that 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 require full cutoffs, no floodlights and all that kind of good stuff. So. The site lighting itself should be should not. Would not be an issue unless they install something that they don't. Put under plans or they're not compliant, but most towns that I know have had, you know, dark sky type regulations that require cutoffs. So you're not. And require that no likely trespassing of adjacent property stuff. The concern, I mean, the 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 cars along the north side. You know, will be somewhat buffered by the building that's there and and and, you know, the distance and then. And if we can, if I heard the applicant correctly, that there that he's willing to put up fence also as well as the arborvitary. That should also, at least immediately, because the arborvitary may take some time to grow. But at least the the six foot fence, we we cut off some of that metal like glitter. In the evening, and I would imagine that they would be. Their hours of operation. You know, cut off some time around nine o'clock or so. I'm not sure, but most businesses are. Don't go too far into, although in the winter time, you have five o'clock and start the race. So. But any case, so yeah, those issues, I mean, good issues that can be brought up before the planning is only as well. Anything else? Anyone? Okay. With that, I I think we may usually have a motion to close the hearing. So moved by Scott and and seconds, seven, second. So all those in favor of closing the hearing?
Hi.
Hi.
I raise your hand. I think it's unanimous. So. All right. We have a motion on the floor. And again. Regardless. Regardless how you intend to vote, motion should always be in the affirmative. That a motion to approve. So there's no fusion if it fails. Do we have a motion? Somebody? Want to move? All right, Nolan?
I I motion to approve ZBA twenty twenty two dash zero one. Uh, I motion to approve uh ZBA twenty twenty-two dash zero one. As proposed.
And according to the plan submitted, correct?
Yeah.
All right. Um, we have a second? Seconded by Mystica, so her hand being raised, a uh discussion on the motion. Around, uh, well, we'll start off with the Zoom people, uh, Kurt?
No, I have no questions.
No, no discussion. This is on the main motion. So, Mystica? You're, and any discussion on on it? You muted. Easy shortcut is the space bar. If you're on the computer. No, yes?
No questions.
Uh, discussion, okay. Nolan, any discussion at all in the motion?
Uh, I I think everything sounds good, uh, and I certainly think that if uh the applicant is willing to work with his neighbor about that fencing issue, I think that certainly seems like a uh a reasonable solution to uh ease that concern. Um, so I uh I personally think that uh, you know, the applicant has a good reason for this uh proposal and uh I plan to vote in the affirmative.
Yeah, I I I agree with Nolan, as long as uh it sounds like the applicant is really willing to work with everybody. And, you know, according to, I mean, there's only so much we could do versus what planning is only. But it, I agree, and I would vote in the affirmative.
Okay, Scott?
Um, I I'm in favor of it. Um, personally, I would like to put in the motion though uh for the fencing. I I didn't think of that, uh, because we've had it in the past where we did put it in. Um, the motion and it took a little while for a uh business to actually put the fence up. I believe that uh somebody from the town hall had to go over to find uh that individual that was part of the plan when they moved up to that uh. Location, so um I think maybe we could amend the motion just based on that, uh, just from previous personal experience.
Condition to require fencing, is that acceptable to the person that made the motion and the person who seconded it?
That is acceptable to me.
Mystica, that thumbs up, thumbs down? I let the record show you, there was a thumbs up. Awesome. Um, all right, um, yeah, you know, again, that's, I mean, the graphic shows that requiring a hundred foot buffer pretty much wipes out any reasonable use of the property. You can always argue whether the intended uses. There's a lot of different uses in the B two zone, but I think, you know, I I think no matter what you put in there, you're gonna have. That issue, especially if you come in added from both sides, uh. And uh, so I I would agree that with the with the fence and then and and there's a bunch of issues that still have to go before wetlands. Um, and the State Traffic Commission, things that that were brought up tonight that we really don't have much jurisdiction over. But I think uh. Just looking at the the physical layout, I I tend to agree there is, you know, there is a protection that impacts this property. With that, I'll uh. As for vote, all those in favor signify, well, let let let's do a roll call vote just for the record, Kurt?
Uh, I.
Mystica?
I.
Nolan? Is Nolan, how you vote?
Oh, in favor.
Okay, David?
I.
Scott?
I.
And the chair votes aye. It's unanimous, the variance is best five nothing. I forgot to mention that a four to one vote, yeah. Four to one, absolutely. Three to two would fail. Uh, the way the state statutes work, okay, so congratulations. Hopefully we'll see, you know, some some good landscaping and fencing on both side, well, on both sides, at least that's. This, you know, zone B two, so I mean, there's nothing much. Some kind of commercial would have to go there. You can't, and I, and and it's deep. Yeah, we find this. Terrified, so.
Well, that's, that's one thing that South Windsor forbid.
Yeah.
They actually, I I went through this, you guys, I went through loops to get uh an actual overlay zone in my area. And they they even forbid me to go any type of park activity, but yet. Later in life, they put two small little car dealerships up the road.
Yeah, that's.
That was, that was industrial too, so they they had the reasons. Um, one thing I'd like to ask you, uh, you're representing the owner of poultry. I notice your layout for your town line, I'm not, I'm sorry, the town, yeah, the town lines relative to the uh, which would be the southwest. Um, can, I would assume those are pins that you're going by?
Looks like a monumental park.
I uh. I I would like to just make sure that the owner verifies that because I think that is incorrect.
I'm gonna ask you if you face the other direction and say that again, so our.
Yeah. Master Alshon.
All right.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Uh, I have a concern that there may be an error uh in uh regarding to the um property line. That's located on the southwest. Where it, we have a note on there that projects into South Windsor for four point seven five. Was assumed that's feet, not inches. Uh, I'd like to just have you just double, just verify that, uh, as well as that V jog. I have documents that actually makes it actually a straight line. So I think you, I I don't know if you'd like to get together at another time. I can give you my information uh and share what I have versus what is shown here.
Well, I know the uh, the surveyor, Gary LeClaire, that did the survey, um, did a lot of research on it. And one of the things I did question was the location of the town line, and he assured me that that was correct, what he has, and also that that cut out the V. He assured me that by deeds and by previous mapping that that is the line, so.
All right, because uh, I mean, I don't know if you're, if you're a person who wants to get in talk, in contact with uh Peter over at um. Peter Demali?
Yeah, yeah.
Design professionals.
Well, I can. You know, you can discuss this offline. I mean, we're, the meeting, the hearing's over and certainly you can exchange phone numbers and.
Okay.
And uh, and I think the applicant's phone number is on it.
Okay.
So you can do that, we appreciate it, so.
Yeah.
Hey. Going forward, is there any other business? Yeah, anything that?
Um, I was gonna move in last.
Yeah, and any public participation, I think everybody that is. Here, approval of minutes would be the December sixth, twenty twenty-one. Comments and corrections, any? Get them in, so. Spit out to me, anybody else?
I'll make a motion to approve as written.
Yes, made by Nolan, seconded by. Mystica, hey, all those in favor of approval of the minutes signify by saying I am raising your hand?
I.
I.
Okay, uh, I see. David's saying it will obtain, and so did uh Scott. So, uh, although, so what it was at a one, two, three, four, four zero vote to approve it, four zero. How was it? One, two, two? Yeah. And two extensions.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion made to adjourn. We have a second.
Second.
We had a second by David. We left the guys in the room here making a few motions. Uh, all those in favor of returning?
Hi.
Hi.
Worked out okay? I can. Pause the recording. All right. Eight o'clock? We should ask for overtime.